I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of our citizens, one nation, without doubt, in the name of this law, which is the Constitution of this world.
I do not have any changes to the agenda.
I believe that we need to delete, we need a second reading of ordinance number 1164A, Chapter 14A, City Trees and Forests. And the reason we need to delete that is that we cannot have a second reading.
I'm sorry, but we can't.
We cannot have a second reading until we have my motion accepted the first reading. There was two motions made at our last meeting. One was to accept the mayor's veto and do nothing, which did not pass. The second motion was to accept the mayor's veto and to set a first reading. That motion was changed during the meeting without an amendment, without an amendment to it, changed to say a first reading now. And that is basically what we voted on, was to set the first reading. At no time did we vote to accept the first reading. And that's my reason for wishing to have that taken off the agenda.
Mayor, Mayor, I've talked to Yvonne Taylor, Lori Martinez, so has Misty, and what they advised that we do is just have a first reading tonight. Just have a first reading tonight.
Oh, go for a second reading.
Okay, so under ordinances, item A, change that from second reading to first reading. Okay? I will let you decide at both times if there's any other comments on the agenda. Okay, with proposed changes to ordinances, item A, changing second to first reading of ordinance number 1164, Chapter 14A, City Trees and Forests. All in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion, a second motion.
Me and Mr. Mayor.
I'll both accept your agenda.
Second.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. What changes?
Can we approve the agenda after the motion?
That was a motion.
The motion to approve the agenda would not change.
So my understanding is we are accepting the agenda with one change, changing the word "second" to "first" under ordinances. Okay? All right, so now I move into the minutes section. Motion to approve minutes from April 18th, council meeting.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Under claims, item A, bills in between.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Current claims?
Motion to approve.
Seven. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Credit cards?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, we will move to bring the swim team. I assume it's you happy smiling faces in the front row.
Okay, we are Fall River Swim Team, and we are presenting this t-shirt, signed t-shirt from all our swimmers this year. We had thirty swimmers to begin with, and then went twenty-seven. And we had a very successful year. We sent four swimmers to state. Of the four swimmers, three of them placed in state. And with all the difficulties of our pool, obviously not having lane lines, and ends to our pool to turn around, so they did very well this year. And we just want to say thank you to the city for donating pool time for us, and so we don't have to have that extra expense in our accomplishments of being successful swimmers.
Good job.
Good job.
I'm happy to accept this on behalf of the city. I want everybody to know that the swim team were great to work with all year when we were closed on Tuesdays. Every other day, these kids are great. Their coaches have been wonderful.
No on the taxi weekends, do you know?
The memo you guys brought provided says the fifth.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Pete Lee gave some information that we still need to complete for the FAA requirements, and they had a drone that came out that cost $25,000 and it crashed.
It was not a city drone.
No, it was theirs.
Yeah.
They have volunteers that are going to start scraping and painting the outside of the building out there to freshen it up a little bit. They have requirements that they would like to have set out for if people are going to build hangers out there, the specs for the colors, size, kind of doors, what kind of planes, only storage. So they're interested in working still with the public to get more hangers in out there. They are looking at getting more security cameras, which we have in our agenda given tonight for here, and I believe...
For the airport?
No, for here. Mueller Center, aren't we going to? I think that was in our budget.
Are you referencing the airport?
I am talking about the airport, but we got some here, is that right?
It's on the agenda to be discussed. I guess to clarify, are they talking about cameras at the airport or cameras?
Yeah, that's security cameras for the airport is what they would like, yes.
Okay.
And I believe Frank Maynard is looking into that to get a grant, which could be by the end of May. They did do some roller use of our rollers, I guess they call it the roller from Billy, to flatten out the runways where the grass is growing so that when they land it's a little flatter. They did do some tree trimming, and they would like to maybe get some new trees. Those are issues out there. Same place.
Yeah.
Yeah. Seems like we are a tree tonight. Anyway, that's all I got on now.
Thank you. All right. And they, you do know that there's certain places at an airport you can't even put the trees?
They are very familiar.
So actually, I'm more concerned when you say trees at the airport than previous meetings of conversations about trees, so, okay. Here, Chamber of Commerce update?
I don't have a lot to update because I forgot my notes. We have billboards that are coming in though, between the city and the Chamber of Commerce. We're updating all the billboards, but one, as you come in Rapid City, the one that sits back, that's the old orange and blue Evans Plunge, we'll hit that next year. But we've got, all of them reflecting our new slogan, so everything will be updated, and we hope to have some nice fresh billboards on the corners of West Wyoming. We've got one right in Mill Creek, a couple of Mill Creek Junction, at Edgemont, at Menacotta Junction, coming in from Shadrin on 79, coming in from Rapid. So we have all of our beautiful, like our golf course is represented, the Maumisite's represented, the Waltham Sanctuary, and Evans Plunge, Middletown Springs, of course, so we're happy to have those. And those will be the end of April, we should see those, actually mid-May, we've got stall pushed back on that one. Scott Heathen, meet with Teller at the Rock Mountain International Convention Tourism deal in Coated Wyoming right now, so we look forward to hearing what information that they'll bring back. This is the bus tours that come throughout, come in and out of Hot Springs, so they're there promoting our city. And we also have some banners coming up, that's this month. They'll be going all the way down the streets, they'll be up May through September. We have ninety some, Nolan?
Hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eighty, way out from that one.
Twice.
Twice that. But we also, I saw a little slideshow today of some of the banners, and they're going to have a banner of each of the Miss South Dakota Pageant candidates, they're going down the walkways, all down River Street, so that'll be really neat to see all the color. And I'll update you on the things I missed the last time, six, nine, and...
It was a good meeting. Thank you, Kara. Minutes, good voice management, and your meeting's Wednesday, correct?
We need five on the library.
Five o'clock, Wednesday at the library for historical preservation. I saw their agenda, it looks like a fun meeting. Kara, did you give everyone's point?
We had one last Thursday, we had quite a few people show up. We had a lot of public comments, questions, you know, things from urinal repair, extending the hours, one more hour in the summer, which we already approved that, you know, through the next budget hearing at least. We talked about encouraging people to stay overnight in Hot Springs, and we discussed the overnight advantage program that the Chamber of Commerce is doing, where there's discounts to some of the stores, the local businesses in town are giving for people to stay overnight. And we also discussed the ADA pool lift chair, it's an ongoing discussion. We've had conversations with several people trying to get a lift. There's not one that we can find that even exists that will go from our deck down into the pool, I mean, it'll go like about a foot into the water because we've got such a high height from the top of our water to the decking. So we really have the only option of looking into someone custom making that pool lift, so we're still doing a lot of research on that. We have a lift, a part of the money has been donated by an Evans Plunge member for the stairway to go up to the weight room, and that's going to be going in here in the next couple of weeks, so that would be nice. And we're talking about moving the lift from outside into a more suitable location where somebody with a wheelchair can come from the outside gate right into where the lift is. Right now it's back behind, you know, you've got to go through a lot of chairs, it's just not a reasonable location for an ADA lift. Steve Winia did an LED light update presentation for us. We did some sample lights in the office, and we've gone through several avenues of, yeah, who we're going to have put in these LED lights. We decided that we'd do this in-house to save money, and the cost savings over what, a two, three-year period of time, I think was something a little over $3,000. So we're happy to continue to make upgrades that will save the Evans Plunge and the city money. Hash shower review, our one bid is $20,000. But as we found out since then, Steve Winia again has been talking to a local plumber, and I'm not going to say the number, but it's at least half the cost of what that is. We don't have the exact number yet, but we're looking forward to getting that bid in. We won't have money in our budget this year, but it's something we can look at for next year. Tamanas has been accepted as a new maintenance position, and we have D rolled Bledsoe, our new janitor. And we also have new lifeguards and to add to the list as well. And we're looking forward to getting the pool open outside sometime in May, whenever the weather permits, towards the end or the likely. And we discussed next winter, because we've got a lot of the things that we needed to get done that we needed volunteer help for. I guess I personally would like to see us maybe close Tuesdays, maybe October 15th or November 1st, and staying closed Tuesdays through the closer, and then open seven days a week. So our numbers are up in January, February, March, so I think that it's worth considering because the members want seven days a week, Evans Plunge should be open, that we do that. Then we had a community engagement for health and wellness, and we had a couple of people there from Evans Plunge, members represented at that community engagement for health and wellness that was on April 26th. And that is all that I have, aside from some numbers that I wrote down. We have, this is compared from last year, our in revenue was $35,728.75 this year, was actually down in April $1,100 from last year. This is still, we're up approximately, right around $13,000 all in all this year over last year. And our expenses are actually in April of this year over April of last year, our expenses are down $27,000, 153, wait, $27,153.04.
Do you have any comment about these papers that, is this on? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
The plunge right now has $161,980 cash deficit at the bank, at Wells Fargo. So despite those numbers sound good, they're still...
Wrong? We pool our cash, so we don't have an account at Wells Fargo, but that's far in the hole. But the fund.
The fund, yes.
I think what Kara did was 2016 year to date, where we're at, what demonstrates is that 2016 year to date is much better than 2015 and 14. We're in the right direction, obviously.
I guess we can just be misleading because we still are behind.
That's absolutely true. The overall balance is what you just stated, but for this year, what she stated is accurate for this year.
And we really don't know where we're going to be until the end of the year anyway, you know? This has just given us a good comparison over where we came from from last year. Did a lot of good marketing and promotion, and we have a lot of good upgrades that we put into Evans Plunge, and people are happy.
They are. I think people come to me that have lived here forever and say it's never looked cleaner, it's never looked better. I just don't want to mislead the public and let them think, you know, we're breaking even or whatever, because we're not.
And we don't know that until the end of the year, but you hear what you're saying?
All right, thank you very much. Krista?
Yes?
I know you had a meeting today, and I know we're probably going to talk trees again, and I'm fine with that.
Now, actually, I think we need to...
Just with all the discussion, I think we need to keep looking at...
We'll move on.
Remind.
Oh.
Speak one.
Okay, we did have a meeting today at Parks and, oh, we had Parks and Rec's meeting, and we talked about Keep Hot Springs Beautiful grant for Welcome Park, and we had some guests that had some ideas about some work that wanted to be done. And we talked about doing an actual plan before we get too far into doing anything because it just makes more sense to have a plan first and then do the work. So we kind of left it at that as far as the Welcome Park. We talked about some different ideas on the gazebo that will be at Welcome Park, and then we talked about Keep Hot Springs Beautiful, the American Cleanup, beginning in Centennial Park, I think that's on the calendar. We talked about the restrooms at Brookside, what we have budgeted for it, and when will it begin, and a possible ALX grant that will, so that we can complete the whole project instead of just kind of what we have budgeted with the one bathroom, maybe we'll be able to do both.
You keep looking behind me.
I'm sorry.
Okay. And then we, possible Department of Corrections assistance with painting some projects, we were talking about the bridges, painting them black, that was such a nice improvement. And some of the other things that they could do without a whole lot of supervision. And then park updates, Umaca or Umicra, whichever however you'd like to pronounce the park, the signs, the raking, the stump removal, we talked about that park, the improvements, the Welcome Park, the gazebo placement, again, we decided really to do kind of a plan on it first before we began on anything too much there. Freedom Trail, the mowing, the, we're going, we have a concrete edger, so that will really make that look very nice. And we talked about the downtown bike racks, we've got three that are coming in, the banners that Kara mentioned. We did have a slideshow, which was absolutely fantastic, and for those of you that were at the Parks meeting, it was going to really be attractive. And we talked, and we had Georgia bring up the dog park, and that is part of the plan of moving the soccer field up to Butler, like our tall grass plant, and then doing something with that area that would include a dog park, so that's something that, and maybe also including some more of the parking for the Mueller Center. Gerald Culligan visited with Nolan about some issues with arts and crafts, where the trees might be planted. We talked about painting the inside of the fountain, and about Brookside's getting a grant. And that was about it for the parks, and then on the things that are coming up for the Mueller Center, that's on your calendar, so you can, if you want to go ahead and hit the city, you can get their calendar, it has all the, I don't know what I did, was it simple? You can just hit the city calendar for the, and see what's coming up.
The cleanup is Saturday, 8:00 AM, at Centennial Park until noon, and that's with Keep Hot Springs Beautiful, how they do it.
Krista, can I also, a lot of people remind others that have dogs to pick up after them. That was a big issue. Yeah, that seemed to be a big issue, that people that do have dogs are not picking up after them, so, thank you for reminding me.
On that note.
On that note.
Kim Barbieri will give us an update on the planning and zoning commission.
Yes, the next meeting is on the 18th. At that meeting, we'll be hearing two new subdivisions, which is pretty exciting. That means that people are thinking of building. One would be up near the Mount Gibson site, and the other is right in town at, I think it's 23rd and Washington. So I wanted to let, make sure you knew about that. I did apply for and receive a $75 tuition grant from folks that put on the building code projects and conferences, so we did get that back, and that was a reimbursement. The comp plan is progressing. I've got a really, really vibrant group of now seventeen people that are engaged, and we're out in the community talking with other people, using the folks within our community as our major resource in creating our own plan. Everybody I've talked to at Black Hills Planning and stuff like that are just absolutely flabbergasted we're doing it this way, but I said there's no other way, we couldn't do it in Hot Springs, they want a voice in what their future is, so. And also, I wasn't here last week, the last time that you guys met, I had a stomach problem, but I wanted to thank you for supporting the housing study. It's really, really vital to the development of our community. As we're seeing subdivisions are coming through, we want to be able to give good data so that the houses that we need are being built, instead of ones that maybe we don't need. This housing study has really spurred on some really great development in other communities that have gotten this plan, so I'm really, really excited about that support, and I think that's it.
Thank you, Kelly.
Congratulations on your scholarship.
Yes.
And thank you for your support of the housing study. I did speak with three mayors last week that have had the housing study done in their communities, and they all rave that it's just changed their direction and brought developers there that, you know, were interested in their communities, and it is a really good thing, thanks for facilitating that. Kim, public safety?
Safety.
Sure, Mike.
We did have a public safety meeting. We discussed security cameras here at the Mueller Center. Some of the problems we have down here is our little bathroom, our brand new one has been vandalized before it was even open, so we need to do something down here so we kind of keep track of what's going on behind the building, around the building, so I think we'll try and get those.
I'm going to interrupt right there. Huge, I think you might have left there, but a huge thank you to Rotary, they, it was vandalized, we helped a little bit clean it up, but Rotary stepped in and completely transformed the inside of it so nobody would even have known what happened in there. We're very grateful, not just for building it, but then also for doing that, because that was a mess to clean up, and we were, I don't, I don't understand.
Yeah, they did a good job of getting it vandalized and cleaned up. We talked about some grants that the police department put in for. One is a 2K radar package, and for radar in our units. The total cost of that is, would be $14,790, that's an 80/20 grant. Our cost would be $2,958. However, the way this grant is set up right now, it's that $2,000 is around, or $3,000 is not specifically budgeted for, but the grant won't be awarded until after the first of the year, until after budget time, so we can put that money in our budget stipulated for that. If we don't give the grant, then that money can be used elsewhere in the police department. We're also a home security grant, that's 100% for some car cameras, and we applied again for a cops grant, which is to have an officer at the school, and that's 100% funding for three years, and then the city will be responsible for a year after that. And those are the grants that the police station were in for.
We'll talk more about the cops grant next, Evan invited, how we're budgeting for them, how we're conceiving that.
Hey, Juan.
We also talked about, a little bit about our Fall River fire deal here, and I'm looking into that a little more to see what we need to do, and I did see that there was some large environmental, South Dakota, environmental grants given out this year to different places, and I'm thinking that maybe what we're trying to do with our fire situation along the river here, along the edge, is something that we may be able to get a grant to help us clean that up. I'm hoping so anyway.
Really helps have a tree plan. Just saying, if you have a tree plan, they'll know how you plan and what to do. We can look into that.
Can we maybe, then, in the...
I think we've got a tree plan, just read the, the ordinances that we've got.
It's in states that you have to keep...
This is a safety thing.
Keep quiet at the intersection of streets, not rock, or vegetation. We'll look at the grant.
Opportunities. How it works, or?
Yeah. We had one request for water bill adjustment, which we declined. We also had a deal with a water disconnect, which we were checking on policy for on that. how that is, because the person that has it is actually outside the city limits, and wants to be disconnected. And since we have a $17 service availability, we're, I'm figuring, we're trying to figure out the legality, since he is outside city limits, he's not inside, and the water availability policy covers inside the city. We also talked a little bit about Albany Avenue, how we're going to be doing the rock measurements and profiles for, he's getting down to the final, the final deal on that. The loading dock, we had a discussion on some of the dirt. Plumbing is being done, electricity is being in. I see the guys were all in rock down there. We had Tracy still working out at Bowler Falls, trying to find all the land points, all the little property pins and everything we need out there, with the resolutions, some of the resolutions we got tonight to follow that. And we also had a service problem with another consumer up on University that has since been handled.
Yes, and thank you for that. All right. Georgia, besides our beautiful off course is open, does this have a meeting?
Oh, we didn't have a meeting, but Jason called me because they had a major breakdown on one of their mowers, and so he had to get a new, looks like he's getting a used, good used mower to help finish out the season. And he thought that it was, he might even go pick it up to save on shipping, I don't know. It was kind of an expense that he wasn't planning on, but it was in his budget, so he was okay. That's all.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Andrea, the volunteer fire department? Is next Tuesday, 7 o'clock at the fire hall. Thank you. Okay, I think I'm ready for new business. Did I speak anything else, Nolan?
Just that, of course.
All right, new business, item A, discussion and possible motion to approve amended wastewater holding pond contract. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you for that. Discussion and possible motion to renew all 2016 through 2017 malt beverage license holders. Do you have that in the package? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, discussion and possible motion to renew retail on-off sale wine license for Springs Steakhouse. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Item D, discussion and possible motion to approve Hot Springs Fire Department parade for Saturday, July 2nd, 2016. Is this going to be riders or?
It'd be most likely the riders doing it. It's independent, so we'd expect them to do their own events.
So we're just allowing them to do it? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Item E, discussion and possible motion to approve use of contingency funds for $910 for Mueller Center cameras.
So move.
Second. I'm sorry. Jordan, Jordan Tim, actually. They're closer to the vandalism. So you have that?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we want any additional discussion on that? I know, I agree that we probably need this, but I would like for him to try to find this in his budget or budget for it at budget time. We're going to have every department in the city coming to us for things that they didn't budget for if we don't make them stick to their budgets. And I don't know that this is an emergency item, that may just be my opinion. I want the new bathroom to be taken care of, but I'd just like to see it budgeted for. Does he not have money in his budget? Didn't he find it for this?
We looked over his budget, and it doesn't appear that he has that readily available. At the end of the year, he may have that, which will offset, but to be, to go back a little bit, this was not initiated by the Mueller Center, it was not initiated by the director down here. It was more of a.
But still, it would come out of his budget.
Correct, I see what. But that was not the initial request for this. So your other concern about, other department heads did the same request, it wasn't a site specific request.
But they won't see it that way. They'll just see the Mueller Center's getting something that wasn't budgeted.
We do our best.
They're seeing that.
We do our best to stay in good communication with each department head, so all the department heads know why this is being requested. I don't foresee it being like one at my place, though. We already have security cameras on the locations where we need them critically, this is kind of the last, one of the last pieces.
An issue, we have them other places, that was an issue too, but it's something that should be budgeted for, and that's just my opinion.
Fair.
The only thing I'd like to say is that $910 seems pretty cheap for a camera system. I know I've seen the cameras at City Hall, and they're not good by any stretch of the magic. I mean, to actually get to ID somebody, especially, and we're talking bathrooms, distance is away, if you are going to spend the money on a camera system, I mean, we see it in countless businesses here in town that they have cheap camera systems, and they just don't work, is the other thing. So if you are going to spend the money on it, I mean, don't be afraid to kind of pony up a little bit, so it's something that we can actually use. Because if you get a camera system that basically isn't up to par, I mean, then people are going mad too, because, you know, why aren't you solving this crime? Here's a fuzzy picture of what could be anybody sitting in the audience, you know.
Let it fly anything there, are you? Are there cameras that we have around the city, are they good quality, if they give you good pictures?
I haven't seen a lot of them. I've seen one shot of the ones at City Hall, I know they're shooting out, and they're not the greatest cameras, no. They're, I mean.
But we have used them effectively for situations.
If you get close enough, obviously, to any camera, it's going to work. But here we're talking, I mean, I doubt they're going to stick one on top of the bathroom out there, or, and I don't know how many they're going to put in, type deal, so, I mean, take that with a grain of salt too, but I know if they're putting in any large scale camera system, like more than two or three, the $910 seems pretty cheap, and they could possibly be pretty ineffective at that point.
Thank you. And thank you, officer. Any other discussion?
Actually, the camera is actually not 900, I think. If I read it, the camera is only $165. And so it's not $910. It's the extra material for the mounting, and there's $375 on three-year warranty. So really, that's where the cost is coming in at.
So are you saying it's a really cheap camera now?
Yeah. I mean, I think the $910 camera that comes here, mounting and everything, but you can buy game cameras that cost more than that $160 mark, so it's something just to think about when you're.
Thank you.
Purchasing these types of items, that if we're the ones that are going to be using it down the road, it should be something that's usable for.
Good point. Thank you. Good point. I still have a motion in a second.
We can change the motion, motion for a substitute motion. All right. Take that.
I'll make a, I'll make a substitute motion that we do more research on it and maybe bring it back to our next meeting.
So we get a second on that? All in favor? Opposed? So we're going to look at the quality of the camera and bring it back? I'm sure we have one that will take the distance. All right, where are we at? Discussion and possible motion to approve placing a name for dumpster for the cleanup of 602 South Forest Street. Kim is still here, and I need a motion in a second to discuss. All right, now, Kim, can you give us some information?
Okay, I had put, there we go, I had put a little sheet in your file that had the pictures and everything. The basics of this is, is that the owner of the property had left the property kind of in a hurry after he became very ill, and was moved into care in 2012. The family had always been hopeful that he'd move back, and so nothing, including food, was removed from the house. He died last year, and the family's been able to move some stuff out, but most of it, including the food, is sitting out in the front of the property in bags. The person I've been talking to, Ramona, she's the executor for this property that's now going through, it's actually through probate now, they're trying to clear it out and get it sold. They have no money in the estate. The person who's the executor is on disability. They have no money to take care of this property and get it cleaned out and get it ready to sell. Basically, anything that's sold from this property is going to be the only thing that they're going to have as far as the state. So they're very motivated people, but they have no money to start up front with it. Whenever I first sent out the request to meet, she said, "Don't even bother meeting with me, I can't get out there, I'm on disability, just go ahead, you know, if you get us a dumpster, we'll fill it, and we'll get this place cleaned up and turned around." She said, "There's nothing else I can do." And she kind of, it sounded to me, in talking with her, we talked at length, that she really would like this thing cleaned up. I have received two phone calls from neighbors that were willing to give written complaints, but they said that sometimes when it starts to get warmer, the rotten food in the front lawn starts really reeking. There's a bunch of stuff that's just an attractive nuisance on the property, and they haven't, the property itself hasn't been cleaned, or as far as brush mowing, broken down tree limbs and stuff like that hasn't been taken care of since 2012. So it's a real problem at the end of the street, it's one that everybody goes down, if you go down Fourth Street, you run right into it. And I'm just requesting that this gets some attention. I have no idea what the dumpster is going to cost, it depends on what they pull out of there. Just based on what I saw on the outside, I'm guessing it's going to be a mixed bag, and I'm guessing anywhere between $3,000 to $5,000, with the hopes that we'd be able to get that money back into the fund within one to two years.
Do you have a fund for this?
No, no.
Your budget.
It would come out of my budget. Any money that comes back goes directly into the general fund, though.
That's what you're asking, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't get it back in my budget. Once it's spent, it's spent out of my budget. But once, if we put the lien on, the lien's paid, it would come back to the general fund. The only thing I don't have, and they weren't able to get that to me today, I was thinking during the weekends, that I'd like to see what line, how far we are back in line as far as liens go, for the value of the property. They did not, weren't able to tell me right off the top of their head if there was any outstanding other liens or taxes due on the property.
Do you consider this a fire hazard?
Yes.